Like the call this meeting to order. Roll call please.
Of course, Councilmember Shaker.
Sure.
Councilmember Perkins.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Councilmember McCafferty.
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gernio.
Here.
Mayor Miller is absent tonight and our town attorney is present.
Okay, presentation, the discussion regarding Chino Valley Police Department statistics.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Council. So I'm here to provide you an update on the police department, some functions that we do, some statistics. Thank goodness the mayor's not here, there is forty-two slides. We'd probably get in trouble. Yeah, we'll have to cut it down. We have a. Next. Kind of boring stuff, we'll try to lighten the mood a little bit. If you guys have any questions, please feel free to ask. There'll be some time at the end as well, so we can clarify anything or maybe cover something that you want to hear that maybe was it covered in the PowerPoint? We're going to do kind of a Russian roulette type of thing, I'll handle some of the stuff. Lieutenant Chapman will handle some stuff and then the chief will close it out with the final and then we'll have time for questions. Here we go. Or not. What do I got to turn it on? Oh, look at that. So there's a slide on how to use a keyboard. And amount. Cool. So like I said, we're going to kind of do the thirty thousand foot view, we're going to cover a lot of statistics over the last year. Some of the stats that we run through our program are year-based, so they start January one, they end December thirty-first. Some of the stats that are going to, you're going to see on the presentation, some specifically state from July one to June thirtieth. Those are for our statistical purposes that we keep for government highway safety funds and grants, those are the stats that we have to run, so those are the available stats that we have to give to you. But most of this is, is a year, it's, it's a year swath of what we, we've dealt with or what we continue to deal with. And some of the trends over the last three years moving forward, you'll see an increase in, in statistical data. So as of right now, we have allocated thirty-five sworn positions. We have thirty-one filled at this moment in time. There will be a gentleman who's a lateral from Phoenix PD that will be signing a conditional offer on Monday, so that'll make thirty-two. And we also have testing for new hire testing going to the academy. The next academy starts in January, January seventh. We have nine.
No, it's me.
Okay. I was gonna say, sorry. Nine, we have nine applicants that have met the minimum qualifications to test for new hire testing, which is this coming Saturday. So we hope to have a good candidate pool for that, so we can select a couple folks to go through the academy starting in January. Administratively, we have four positions that are filled, chief, deputy chief, lieutenant, and an admin sergeant. There are three detectives, two are in-house, so general detectives that are housed at our police department that handle anything Chino Valley. And one get them detective, which is a multi-agency gang task force that's ran through Arizona DPS. He's off-site, I believe seventy-five percent of seventy-five percent of his pay is, is covered by DPS through their gang task force. We have two school resource officers at the moment. One is at Heritage Middle School, that's one that we have provided the school district for coverage at the middle school. The other one is full-time at the Chino Valley High School, that is the one that is underneath the grant, so he's a little bit more concreted at that location. Officer Torres is the one at Heritage Middle School, both of them are doing a great job. Torres has been around for a bit. We can pull him from the school in case of emergency. He can respond to calls, he can supplement patrol and keep an eye on the school at the same time if need be. Officer Noden, who's at the high school, since he's under the grant, we can't touch him. He stays at the high school, he stays within the schools and we can't pull him for resources or anything unless the school is out on break and then we can utilize his services elsewhere with training and patrol. On patrol, we currently have twenty-two. That's not actually what we filled right now and I'll get into that with injuries and people that are out. Currently in the academy, at Narda, Northern Arizona Regional Training Academy, we have two cadets. When they graduate in December, they enter the field training program, which is sixteen weeks. And they will not be solo status until June of twenty twenty-four, so they're there, but they're not, they're there. Current officers in the field training, we have two. Officer Antersir and Officer Snyder that just graduated the academy this past June. They're doing very well on the field training program and they're scheduled to get off first couple of weeks of October, so they'll be solo supplementing patrol, which will be great. We currently have two officers on modified duty, modified duty assignment. One is due to injury and one is due to health issues. And then we have two officers that are still full duty but waiting for surgery to occur in October. One is a four-month recovery and the other one I believe is a five to six month recovery, so they will be out of the field for quite some time. One is a sergeant, one is a field training officer, so that's not a good thing. One officer is deployed overseas, he'll be in Romania, did he move from Romania? Versus still Romania. As far as we know, secretive, he's still in Romania. But he will be back March or April of twenty twenty-four, we've been without him since March of twenty-three. Total staff available for patrol at this time, not including the school resource officers, we only have thirteen. Minimum staffing per our policy is three per shift. We have four shifts or four squads. Currently using a pitman schedule, which is a twelve-hour and an eight-hour shift, so they'll work two days on, two days off, bless you. Two days on, two days off, three days on, two days off, so every other weekend, basically, they have off. The officers seem to like that, more time with their families on the weekends, they're not stuck on, you know, weekend graveyards for six months before rotation, so. We're still looking to get off that twelve hours, it's just the manpower kind of thing that we need to solve before we go that route. We tried it with minimal amount of people for the ten-hour shifts before and probably three weeks into it, somebody twisted an ankle and was out for two months and we're back to twelve-hour shifts, so we're still working on it. Retirements, within the last six months, we've had two retirements. Upcoming, one is scheduled to retire in December of twenty twenty-three and one is scheduled to retire in August twenty-four. Potential three employees are eligible to retire by twenty twenty-five and six additional are eligible to retire by twenty twenty-eight. That means that they have their time in and they're eligible for it, not saying that they're going to retire at that time, but they've got their time in and can retire, and usually they give us a pretty good heads up on when they're gonna be leaving, so we can kind of pre-plan for things. Lighter modified duty in twenty twenty-one, two employees were placed on lighter modified duty. Total hours were four hundred and sixty-seven hours. Both of them were work-related injuries. Twenty twenty-two, we had seven employees that were placed on a lighter modified duty assignment for a grand total of two thousand two hundred and fifty-one hours. Out of those seven, two were non-work related injuries and five were work-related injuries. This year so far, we've had six placed on lighter modified duty, fifteen fifteen hours, and that was as of the end of August. Three were non-work related injuries and three were work-related, and then again, one officer is deployed until March of, or April, March or April twenty twenty-four. So staffing needs, as I said, we run twelve-hour shifts. We need twelve officers minimum for minimum staffing requirements, so that's four shifts of three people. Each squad, there are two graveyard squads and two day shift squads. Three officers minimum per squad, like I said, one is typically a sergeant, one's a field training officer and the other one's an officer. At a minimum staffing vacation days are often denied, employee or employees have to shift trade and training days are pretty much impossible to schedule. Overtime hours increased due to sick calls and further injuries. So we've, we've, we've worked some things in for training hours, we're mandated twelve training hours at least a year per Arizona Peace Officer Standards and Training rules and regulations. We've filtered in video trainings through Police One, which is a certified vendor through ASPOST, Arizona Peace Officer Standards to provide training. So we've supplemented our training needs through video, video training, which is okay, but it's not what we really want to do, in-person training is a lot better. So hopefully that turns around here shortly. In order to go to ten-hour shifts, we need eighteen officers per minimum staffing requirements, that's six squads, two graveyards, two swing shifts, two day shift. Three officers minimum per shift, there'd be two sergeants and two FTOs will work each day. Probably overlapping, so there's a supervisor on it at every given time. These minimum numbers mean no days off will be approved, and if someone were to be out on injury for any length of time, twelve-hour shifts would be reinstated to ensure proper coverage. Sick calls would mean overtime to meet minimum staffing requirements, so that's, that's kind of the overview of the bare minimum, we would need to go to ten-hour shift, so. That's all we had and we lost one, we'd, we'd be back to twelve. Use of force incidents, so obviously with our job, we're, we're not going to get away from the potential for use of force, we do everything as far as de-escalation techniques and verbal verbal judo tactics, as they call it, to get around using force, but sometimes we have to use force in certain situations. In twenty twenty-one, we had five reported use of force incidents. In twenty twenty-two, we had twelve. And in twenty twenty-three, we had three. You'll see an uptick in twenty twenty-two, that just doesn't mean we're angry in twenty twenty-two or something was going on. During the time of, so prior to us revamping our use of force policy, a use of force per our policy was anything outside the norm of handcuffing. So if I tell you, hey, turn around, put your hands behind your back and they struggle and I twisted an arm, that's a use of force. Our standards were a lot more strict than Arizona Post or reasonable officer standards for the country. So we use that as a reportable offense, also included in that reportable offense was anytime you draw your weapon, even at the low ready or there's a threat of you using a taser, even if you verbally say, I will tase you and you don't have your taser out, that's a reportable use of force event, so. A lot of those twelve were displaying a firearm threat to use a taser, there was only, I think, two during twenty twenty-two that were actually hands-on situations that we had to use force, so we've revamped that policy and procedure in the last couple of months. We no longer include the threat of firearm or the verbal, hey, we have a taser, we're going to tase you. However, that is documented in our actual reports, we just don't do a separate report for an internal review on it. So we still know about it, it's still stated, but we just it's not something they need to do an additional report on. Policy and an incident review, an incident review is conducted on all use of forces. Our policy states during use of force, if there's any severe injury or traumatic injury or death, an incident review obviously would be conducted per policy, but it gives us wiggle room in the policy that the chief or his designee can dictate when we're doing use of force reviews. We've adopted the policy of always doing a use of force review as proactively as we can. We don't wait for somebody to come in and complain or somebody to call and say, hey, your officer did this, we already know about it, we've already reviewed it, we convened a use of force review board. Defensive tactics instructor was assigned to it, a sergeant and then a civilian employee to look at it to make sure that we're abiding by our own policies and those are accepted by public. So no incidents that we've had reviewed since twenty twenty-one have resulted in any disciplinary action. In all case, the use of force was found to be justified. So although those numbers, you know, the twelve seems kind of high, it's really not, and it's hands-on stuff, it's not an actual fight. Excuse me. Total reports taken between July first and July thirty, I mean, sorry, July first and June thirtieth. This is starting last year, so July of twenty twenty-two to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. The twenty twenty-one year, nine thousand seven hundred and fifty-six reports were taken. Twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two is eleven nine ninety-one. Twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three is twelve five forty-one. And then as of September the first this year, one thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven projected to be thirteen thousand plus. And we're well on track to get, break that number, and as you could see, it's increasing every year. Reported traffic offenses, so these are, these are traffic offenses that are called in by the public. These are, you know, you're driving down the road, somebody cuts you off, flips you off, driving a radically aggressive driving, speeding, things of that nature. This is the public calling into dispatch saying, hey, we have a problem. It comes out as a traffic offense to our officers who are on the lookout for this vehicle and search the area. If they find it and they observe driving behavior consistent with what was reported, they will take enforcement action, whether that be a citation or a warning. But we stat these for a purpose of how many calls and how many resources we need to allocate to certain areas. Trying to find out where the most concentrated area of these traffic offenses occur. You'd be shocked, but they're on the highway. So, yeah. Two thousand, two thousand twenty-one, there was three hundred and two. Twenty twenty-two, there was two hundred and twenty-six. Twenty twenty-three, there was ninety-seven so far as of September first, twenty twenty-three. We're starting to see this year, especially with how many are coming through. There's a lot more people that are upset when they're driving, so the driving behavior, they're getting a lot worse. Our officers are observing a lot of bad stuff, which increases our citation writing and our traffic contacts. But with the amount of traffic we have driving through town, that's, it's going to continue to go up. Statistics, and I'm not going to bore you by getting into all this kind of stuff, but I broke it down for you to look at each year. Twenty twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four, it's broken down by stop, citation, which ones were speed-related and which ones were warnings. As you'll notice, a lot of the citations and the warnings, there's a pretty good balance between the two. We try to educate our public and our motoring citizens to use due regard when you're driving, drive safely, that may, their corrective action may be a warning or a citation, but we try to teach the population and the citizens both, hey, you're going to get a citation or you can get a warning, we try to use some type of teaching technique in there. Whether that be a citation or a warning, kind of depends on their driving record previous to that. But as you'll see, those have gone up throughout the years. Speeding this year, I can tell you, that was as of September the first, you'll notice speed citations are thirty-seven. I believe at last check, and I didn't update this, was, we're already up into the nineties. So they're going to continue, like I said, with the motoring public increasing through the town. And we do our best with the manpower that we have to do as much traffic enforcement as possible. The one thing we'd like to kind of concentrate on moving forward when we get fully staffed is providing, you know, focused traffic enforcement in certain areas. We utilize government highway safety funds through grant funding to fund a lot of our traffic details. We do multi-agency details in town. So sometimes you'll see other agencies' cars pulling people over on eighty-nine and two north. That's usually because we have a, a traffic thing going on through GOHS, so. And we'll continue to do that, and we get a lot of calls that don't go through dispatch that just come straight to us saying, hey, Butterfield Road, it's like a freeway, you need to do something. We take that very serious, the traffic sign goes out with the digital speed sign. Frank Marbury puts out his little traffic thing, figuring out how much traffic's going through there, some more signs are going up and then we have focused enforcement on that area too. One of my main traffic gurus, Officer Polano, has been out on injury for a couple of months. So those speed citations would be three times as much as they were if he was here. So he's coming back shortly, so it'll change. These are our collision stats from July first through June thirtieth. It's pretty consistent throughout the years, however, we've seen a kind of an uptick in our non-injury collisions, which is great. People aren't being majorly injured as far as hit and runs are concerned, that's also been kind of floating around unacceptable levels. A lot of the hit and run collisions happen in parking lots, like at Safeway. Somebody backs up into a car and annihilates the side of a car and then they leave. So we do our best to track those folks down, but pretty much consistent and you can see that the numbers will kind of rise, you know, ebbs and flows with the totality of numbers based on our ability to do traffic enforcement. Obviously, our numbers kind of stay stable because we're out there, we're visible, we're doing traffic enforcement details, we're trying to do what we can to slow people down, which decreases the amount of injuries we're seeing. But when there is injuries, unfortunately, they're massive injuries, so.
Can I just ask one question about the fatalities? That's within the town of Chino Valley, because there's other words that you might respond to, but they're outside.
Yeah. Just one. Yeah, so I, I can tell you from experience, a lot of the fatalities that aren't reported in our jurisdiction that we respond to are usually north going towards Palden. And we have I could say three that I can think of in the last eight months that have occurred just outside of our jurisdiction, our north jurisdictional boundary. Yeah, we're still there, helping them out as much as possible and we're usually the first ones to arrive on scene too, because county, the sheriff's department spread thin with their manpower too, so they're coming from God only knows where and then DPS is the same way, so by the time they get there, we're already there. So we're, we're, we're assisting a lot on those just outside of jurisdiction. DUI arrests from July first to June thirtieth, this is current as of September first, two thousand and three. There's been a rise, I think it's because we're out there doing a lot more enforcement, I'd like to say that we're, we're catching the, catching the people driving through town intoxicated. You know, as our numbers go up, patrol-wise and staffing-wise, that number will increase as far as arrests being made. I think there was four more added on to the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four in the last month. Total arrests, they're broken down for you from year to year. And they're broken down from adult, juvenile and total arrests. As you can also tell through that, that is increasing. If you'll notice, our juvenile arrests have exponentially increased over the past few years. That's due to us having more of a footprint in the schools, the vapes, the amount of vapes, THC, minor drug offenses, things like that, that are being caught and dealt with at a harsher level, you know, that zero tolerance, I guess you would say, for shenanigans going on at the schools. So our arrests have increased. And our total arrests continues to go up as well. So here's some stats on domestic violence calls. These usually typically come out as family fight calls per our call nature logs on our computers. These numbers do not reflect any disorderly conduct or criminal damage per domestic violence call. So the way we run is, and I'll talk about it a little later, we contract with the sheriff's department for our dispatch and all of our CAD systems and our reporting system. There's a call nature that pops up, family fight kind of is an overarching encompassing term used for the call. So when I'm running a report and I run family fights, these are the numbers that come up. If they're inappropriately labeled or incorrectly labeled as disorderly conduct or criminal damage and it wasn't changed or caught, then they won't show up on this, so. Just to say the numbers are probably a little bit higher than they are reflected here on this slide. But again, they've gone up between twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-three, we're already at ninety-seven this year.
Are these still some of your most dangerous calls, these?
Yeah. It remains that way, it's, it's one of those volatile situations where you don't know what you're walking into when you get there. So, you know, usually we'll send minimally two officers, it's nice if there's a third, just for overwatch, but yeah, they're, they're one of those ones where your hair's on the back of your neck, stand up. Because sometimes the victim doesn't want to be a victim and they're upset that the cops are there because they didn't call. So now they turn on you, now there's a suspect as well as a suspect, so. It's fun. So here's some statistics just broken down, I, I included criminal damage vandalism and property damage calls. So your criminal damages are, is you know, the senior center has lights broken out in the front or the park has, you know, street signs bent down. Your vandalisms are graffiti, property to, property damage that is outside the norm. Like a car, your property damage calls would be like a car ran into a house. Although it's a crash, it's on private property, so it's property damage, so it's weird how these things are kind of organized, but that's how they're listed in our system, so. Drug arrests per year, so as you can tell, in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, there's a pretty good number of drug arrests just here in the town. And these are only arrests that have been made in the town of Chino Valley. So if we've had our canine out on the highway up on I forty or assisting with another drug task force detail or something, those arrests are not included in here. So those numbers are probably a little bit higher. But this kind of gives you a pretty good idea of what we're dealing with in town. And again, the more staffing we have available to do focused patrols on our high crime areas or narcotics-related folks in town, those numbers will continue to go up. Not a lot of load vehicles going through Chino that we've caught, we know that they're out there, we try to find them. Mostly low-level arrests, personal use, maybe a sales case here and there. But our officers do a really good job of getting in there and finding, finding the bad stuff. I also listed for you, just to kind of give you a overview, suspected drug use, I use that, so that's any, any call where there was suspected drug use in the call, so if we went out to a family fight and we we're, during our investigation, we determined that one of, one or both parties that were involved in this family fight were under the influence of any type of narcotic or drug. There's a little box on our forums in the CAD system that will show suspected drug use. So these are the calls that we've responded to where there's been suspected drug use, this is not including the drug arrests that we've made, like on traffic stops or, or otherwise, so they're completely separate from the top stats. Assaults reported per year, this does not include domestic violence-related assaults, this is school kids out at Sonic fighting it out. Twenty twenty-one, we had twelve, twenty twenty-two, we had twenty, and twenty-three, we had nineteen so far, so. We're going to beat twenty twenty-two, I'm assuming. Burglaries reported, I'm happy to say that those numbers are not acceptable, but not as bad as it could be in others jurisdictions. We spend a lot of time during the holidays and during the nighttime with our officers driving street to street to street, I mean, there's there's not a time where I can't think of my patrol people hitting almost every street in town, at least one time during their patrol shift. So we know Christmas lights, Christmas decorations stolen. We have that problem, people leaving their car doors open, things like that. We've actually had officers go through and shut people's garage doors in the middle of the night, just pop and grab the button or knock on the door and say, can you shut your garage door so we don't come back at her in the morning for a report? And they say, yep, absolutely, or driving by spotlight the cars and say, your car doors are unlocked, did you know that? Oh yeah, we live in Chino Valley, Arizona. No, lock your doors. Let Lieutenant Chapman talk about animal control stats and the investigation stats.
Hello, Vice Mayor and Council, talk about animal control stats, we have two full-time animal control officers, they cover seven days a week. Generally, day shift hours, that would be seven AM to five PM. And we have three adoption specialists, one is a full-time employee and the other two are part-time employees. And they have a ton of volunteers over at the animal shelter, because who doesn't like animals? Our and our impounds, you can see it's broken down on impounds, how many animals they've adopted, how many they've returned, how many they've euthanized, we do operate a no-kill shelter, but occasionally there is an animal that needs to be put down due to aggressiveness. There have been ones put down in the past due to court orders, they had bit somebody and been quarantined there, and it's been ruled that the dog cannot be returned to the owner because it's a danger. And also a couple of dogs with health problems that they've had to put down. We also, the animal problems calls, that could be anything from a dog at large, a sometimes they're labeled that as a dog barking, even though there is a separate animal noise one. It's mostly going to be dogs at large or, you know, my dog, the dogs are trying to fight my dogs through the fence, whichever it may be with that. The animal pickups are going to be the, the dog at larges. Those are dogs that pick up and they may, our animal control officers get to know some of the dogs around town, so if it's a dog that frequently gets out, they just drive it over to the owner's house and return it and issue them a warning or citation, whichever action is warranted. Animal noise, it's going to be the dogs barking. A lot of those, we get in the middle, middle of the night and a patrol officer responds out there, turns his car off, rolls his windows down, sees if he can hear a dog barking, if the dog's barking, he'll either choose to have animal control follow up with it in the morning or go out there and take action himself, knock on the door. We, we've mostly went to those of having our animal control deal with those, because we have had a couple instances in the past where officers have knocked on someone's door at two o'clock in the morning and answered the door with a gun in their hand and it could be, you know, confrontation that's not needed over and, and animal barking. Animal neglect, those calls could be anything from a, a dog to, we get ones on horses as well. We frequently receive those on, like, some of the rehabilitation places in the town, somebody that's new to the town or driving by will call and you know, we go out there and look and the animals are generally taken care of in most instances, and then we call the reporting party back, tell them, hey, that's a rehabilitation facility, they're, they're getting these animals to where they can be adopted out to, you know, a loving home. And the animal bites as well, any, any time an animal, a dog bites somebody, it is to be reported to us, it's probably not always reported to us because if they don't go seek medical, most of those are either self-reported or a majority of them are, they go to a medical facility, whether it be Y R M C or their local doctor and they're, they're mandated to report those to us. Going into our SRO statistics, as Deputy Chief McIntyre stated earlier, we have two Going into our SRO statistics, as Deputy Chief McIntyre stated earlier, we have basically two full-time school resource officers now. That's just starting this year. Prior to that, we only had one full-time school resource officer. And twenty twenty-one, the school resource officer handled one hundred and seventy-three calls for service. And these are just the ones at the school. Because they're, it would be very, very time intensive to go through every call the school resource officer went to and determined. So when I pulled these statistics, I just went on a general at the school type location. We do have a circumstance code for at a school, so I on those calls. And twenty twenty-two, there were two hundred and seventeen. And so far this year, it's a hundred and twenty-nine. That might seem very high, but it's not because you got to look, this is from January of twenty twenty-three, when school was in session from January to May. So that's why, just in case you guys are thinking, wow, school's only been in for like a month. It's it's going back to beginning of January. Our investigation statistics, these are not accurate at all. When I was well, I'm going to explain that. When I was pulling these stats on, back on August twenty-ninth, I identified a problem and we've since rectified it. Prior to twenty twenty-two, there was no formal tracking of investigations cases. So, you know, when you look at twenty twenty-one and you see three active cases and twenty-three closed case, you're like, wow, an entire year and these guys only worked out twenty-six cases. That's that's untrue. And the twenty twenty-two, the one active case in thirty-three close, it's not accurate at all. So the way our our system worked, I came up, I started with an Excel spreadsheet to track investigations cases. We were tracking on that way. Then I got with our records custodian and I started and the way that our calls goes, it's workflow. So an officer takes a call, they write the report, they workflow it to their sergeant who reviews it, who workflows it to records. And we started a process where when it got to records, if it was to go to investigations, they sent it to the investigation supervisor, which was myself at the time. And then I would, I would take that workflow and change the responsible officer to which one of our two detectives was going to handle it and send it over to them. Unbeknownst to me, that didn't actually change the call to the detective's name, that just changed the workflow to them. And when when I identified that problem on eight twenty-nine, we took care of it. And now that should, moving forward, that will be tracked correctly, because the actual call is being put in the investigator's name. Here's some behind the scenes things that we don't keep stats on. Some of these photos, the one with the jump roping, that was Officer Silva and Officer Jones. That kind of went a little viral for us. I actually had a national media reaching out to me, having me sign waivers and stuff so they could use that without us saying, hey, you owe us money or anything like that. There's some force on force training, Citizens Academy, the Congo Line of Cars, that was I believe that was during COVID. We had several people that we'd go by and, you know, waved at them and said hi and wished them a happy birthday. It was mostly younger children because they weren't unable to hang out with their friends. So we went by to make their day a little brighter. There's Officer Jones, that's an event called Cops and Bobbers, Prescott Valley Police Department hosts that. And what they do there is Arizona Game and Fish comes in on the day of it and drops huge amount of fish into Fane Lake there. And you get the fish for free. And it's no fishing license required. Adults and children come out and fish with the police for free on that day. The young lady there, that's one of our cadets in our cadet program that we've started within the last year and in hopes of fostering up some of the the youth in the community to be interested in police work. And we believe we can make that program successful and get some good candidates to be police officers in the future. And we'll already know a lot about them and they'll know a lot about how the police department works. The photo to the right of that, that's going to be some of our officers participating in the Big Brothers, Big Sisters Ballathon, where they raise funds for Big Brothers and Big Sisters. Officer McAvoy playing basketball with the kid. And the bottom right picture is Officer Enriquez had met this lady. She lives by herself and she had met her on a call for service and kind of been checking up on her. And when she knew it was her birthday, she asked if we could get her a cake and a balloon, a slice of cake and a balloon and take it out there. So there was about five or six of us that went out there and saying her happy birthday and she really enjoyed that. And then the Little League for probably the past four or five years, we've been, our Police Officer Association has been sponsoring there. And they always invite us to come out and throw the first pitches of the season. And here's here's some more behind the scenes where this young man wanted to be a police officer, envied police officers, so some of our guys met up with them. There's some shop with a cop photos there. That's an event every year where underprivileged children are either referred or they submit application themselves. And it's dependent on how many kids gets to go, depend is dependent on how many police officers sign up. That's a volunteer program. Our officers go out and do that on their own time for free. So it's a really good program. They Santa Claus lands in a helicopter, says hi, takes photos with all the kids. And they, depending on how much funds they raise, they they give them a gift card and they get to go buy gifts for their families. So and the parents usually send a list of what they need, so you know, the kids run around buying Xboxes and Playstations when they need, you know, socks and underwear. Got a photo with the the Hertz donuts. That's our, started that a couple of years ago. It's our annual dodgeball game against the middle school there, where the the champions right now, the police department is. And the council, you guys presented us with a a trophy, so. And then, yeah, you know, you got photos there with the chief and Officer Pizzy, when you work with us, this little girl really wanted stickers. So she got up there and put her case to Chief Wen to to order some more stickers, which she ended up doing. This was a family that needed a Thanksgiving meal, so we presented that to them. Chief Wen, one of his goals is to give donuts to every business in Chino Valley. So he goes out and does that all the time. He picks a couple of businesses to give donuts to them. Got the Congo lineup, police cars, that's from the shop with the cop event. There are a lot of police cars out there. And then, of course, our National Night Out, that was a former officer Mate up there dancing like a goofball, so. Contracted services. Right now, we contract with the Pike County Sheriff's Office for our dispatch services. Also, our Spillman Reporting System, that's our CAD system, which tracks all our cars and our in-car computers and where we got all these statistics we're presenting to you from. Our department policies go through a company called Lexipol, they're very knowledgeable. We started back with them in twenty fifteen and have continued with them. They constantly send out updates. If there's a state law change, they're right on it to make sure our policies are current with the with the the state law. And they also change a lot of if if just information's changed from the best practices and the way we should be doing things. They they send that to us as well. And then we are also able to further modify the policies as we see fit for our our community and our police department. And our our department, now I kind of already covered this, that our Lexipol does are maintained by them, they're state specific, all legislative changes and updates. They meet accreditation for agencies, which Chief Wen's going to talk about here in a little bit. Our officers have to acknowledge every policy update, so we can go in at any time and make sure our officers have acknowledged every policy. And there's a lot of them. So when people first get started with us, they have hundreds of policies to acknowledge. So we know that they, and after acknowledging that they read and understand that policy. We have, it's called the daily training bulletins. Each month, we get a package based off our policies that we review for accuracy and make sure it's applicable to our department. And we put those out and the officers have the month to complete those daily daily training bulletins. It's just a constant reminder of, hey, this is what our policy says when this happens, is what it says when this happens. And then I'm going to let Chief Wen get up here and talk.
Don't know if I can top all that. I just wanted to bring this up to the council for some of you that have been around a while and listened to me whine about a new building. One of the issues was we wanted to become accredited. In our old building, there were several things that would not have met those standards. So now that we're in our beautiful new building, we are going to move forward with the accreditation process. We met last week with some representatives that oversee the program. And as you can see on the slide, this is a program that was put together jointly through the AsCops, which is the Chiefs of Police in Arizona, our risk pool, which we're a member of, the league, which you guys attend their training, and also the Arizona Post, which is our overseeing of all of our training. So they support this because it it takes the department to that level where it helps with liability. It shows that we're meeting these standards that have been set above and beyond what, you know, just isn't our normal policy. So sure where the button is here. So we talk about accreditation, it's a review and it's done by outside agencies that come in. It's for us, it'll be, they give you two years. So we actually, Deputy Chief's working on the application right now. So we'll start that process. There's a hundred and seventy-four standards. We won't necessarily have to meet all of those, because we don't have a dispatch center and there's a few that'll be kind of be the N A things. But we go through every one of those standards, we compare it against our policy, we make tweaks. And then they have what are called proofs, which in some cases that may be a picture, it may be part of a body cam. It may be a copy of our policy or a memorandum from the chief, you know, changing things. But we have all those in a system or a database, so they will come in and do an audit. And they will go through the database and check all those standards to make sure we're meeting them and then physically go check things. There's there's standards on where our AED has to be in the car, so they're all consistent. So they will go out and go through all of our cars to make sure our AEDs are where we say they are. So there's, you know, the visual check as well as going through the paperwork. So I'm really excited about this. It will be a lot of work, but I think it'll give the town and the council and the police department something to be proud of. They started this in two thousand and eighteen. Currently, there's about twenty agencies in Arizona that are through the process. And then another thirty there are somewhere in the process, you know, to get to be accredited. And it doesn't end when you get accredited initially. It's an every year thing. So you're constantly checking and rechecking and rechecking to make sure you're meeting what's the most current best practices, current standards. So and I think that the last line is the most important, builds that community trust and confidence in the department. And for you guys to know that you have the best department out there. As you knew, we, like I said, we started the application process. I think we'll have the application probably in next week sometime. We go through that twenty-four months. I don't think it's going to take us twenty-four months. When we walked through with them last week, the two big things that jumped out are the new building, because that solves a lot of the issues right there. And the second thing is because we do have a policy system in place that's recognized and already meets best practices and meets all those standards, that makes it so much easier. Because when I started, we had these big three-ring binders and it was a big mess. And that would have, I don't know that we could have done it in two years, dealing with that. But with Lexipol, it should be fairly straightforward and we're really open to to beat the two-year mark. And I said, I covered that they'll have the assessors come out. And then we'll have a, you have to go through a hearing with their board. And they have to approve it. And then there's an award presentation. And then, like I said, after we get the initial, then it's it'll be a yearly thing to keep up. The cost is very minimal. The first year is five hundred dollars and it's two hundred and fifty dollars a year after that. There are national accreditations, but they run into the thousands of dollars. And then you're trying to meet standards that apply to New York or California or Ohio, where these have been designed specifically for Arizona agencies the way we do business here, so. This is the deputy chief's part. See, I was the shortest one, so.
So I made this slide just to kind of show you what we'd be dealing with for the accreditation process. Like the chief said, it is time intensive. Due to the fact that we use another agency for all of our records, maintenance and reporting systems, it takes longer to pull stats and compile information. To compile all information contained in this PowerPoint alone, it took employees several hours to do. It was thirty-seven point two-five hours just for this stats for this PowerPoint. So on a grandiose scale of accreditation, it's going to take a lot more work. So, but we're dedicated to doing that and it'll be very rewarding, not only for the agency, but for the town. So we look forward to getting that accreditation done. And I think the record for police departments is ten months to the process. So we'll see if we can not nine, we'll see. Yeah. So in order to pull stats, you have to run it through the county system. You have to dictate what stats you want ran, and then you have to handpick a lot of them to go through. So burglaries, if they're misinterpreted on the call logs, I'd have to go through and look at the burglaries and then read some of the reports just to see the heading of what it is, because they're not catalogued right. And that's that's partially some of our fault with our officers not changing the call nature on the calls. But a lot of the times dispatch is in there. I mean, they're busy, they're just, okay, it sounds like burglary and we just, it doesn't get changed. So it is a lot of work, but, yep. Questions?
Questions? Barry? Yeah, do you guys track the percentage of cases that the DA declines to prosecute?
So with Lieutenant Chapman's awesome find on the tracking of our investigations, I don't think we have a we didn't have a process to do that, but moving forward, we will. And I do know we'll decline or not, we can keep that.
I mean, I'm just wondering, has that been a problem?
Not to my knowledge. I mean, you could probably speak on it a little bit more, because he was the investigation supervisor.
I mean, because you hear this nationwide, they're they're in big cities. And I'm just wondering how that rolls out.
Sometimes there's cases where we feel it should be prosecuted and they decide that they don't want to prosecute it. But we have some pretty tenacious investigators that keep pushing it to persuade their judgment towards us.
So this isn't a problem for you guys at the
No, it's it's not a major problem. We we usually, we have a very good working relationship with them. And if it does come to a point where they're adamant it's not going to happen and we are adamant it's going to happen, we have a discussion about that and come up with a resolution on it.
Your use of force policy and the whole protocol, I think that's excellent. Only three, that's really good.
When I, just to clarify too, so the incident reviews, so the incident reviews that we do are on all of our high liability items. So pursuits, any pursuit that we're involved in, we do an incident review, independent of any other investigation. We do an internal review on every single pursuit. Every vehicle per, a vehicle accident involving a patrol vehicle or an officer on duty. We do a complete crash review. So we'll pull in our crash experts and we'll watch body cam and black box stuff with seat belts. And we do proactively kind of what we need to be doing anyways, just to make sure that we're showing that, hey, we don't need somebody to come in and complain. We don't need a lawsuit or liability to be on us. We already did our review and looked at everything. Policies have been changed based on those reviews. So it's not only just the use of force, but several other high liability items that we do.
Sounds like everything you said, I liked everything you said. I didn't see any alarming trends, but in your eyes or the chief's eyes, what is your number one alarming concern or trend that you're seeing in our community that you hope to address or curtail in the future? If there is such a single item.
Patients, people with patients in the community. Just just the level of it's it's high, especially like traffic offenses, aggressive driving, people are more violent at home. They're just irritated, you know, they're they're at their end of their rope, they're frustrated with what's going on, not only locally, but within the country. So we get a lot of people drinking, causing a ruckus, and then we have to go out and deal with it. You know, and that's just, that's an officer safety thing where we just need to watch our Ps and Qs and make sure we're sending the right amount of manpower to the calls, making sure that we're documenting things and getting the people that need to go to jail to jail. And I think one of the the primary concerns is staffing. I mean, to be honest with you. So with the injuries and and things that have plagued us over the last few years, you know, we have a pretty good group of men and women over there that will handle business. And I I'm proud of them because they've stepped up, even being shorthanded and our stats have stayed. I mean, it better yet, they've increased with citations and traffic related contacts, just because they're doing more work, because they know we're shorthanded. But just that, that's concerning to me is the officer safety and going to calls with less people and just keeping people in the seats. Longevity is what we're looking for. We're looking for good men and women to stick around and and be a part of the Chino Valley family for years and years to come. So I think
Great job, Chief. Thanks.
Yep, thank you. You have a question?
Any other questions, Tom?
Nope.
Oh. Okay. Thank you, Deputy Chief, Lieutenant. Chief Wen, thank you. Make a motion, we adjourn?
Second.
On favor? Thank you.